Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Pownell Select Board Meeting for March ninth, two thousand and twenty-three at six P M. I'd like to call the meeting to order and start with a board member roll call, please.
Angie Rollin.
Jamie Percy.
Brian Harris.
Mike Gardner.
Okay, move on to board restructure. Do I have a nomination for chair?
I nominate Mike.
I'll second that.
Do I have any other nominations? Um, I'm supposed to ask three times. I'm gonna ask again. Are you sure? Do you have any other nominations? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Um, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Oh, we can go aye, can't we?
We can.
Aye.
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 All right, Mike, you are our board chair.
Thank you.
Take it from here.
I'll do the this.
Good job.
And I'm honored to be the board chair again, actually. Uh, I'll take a nomination for vice chair this time.
I'll nominate Angie Rollin.
I'll second that. Uh, any more nominations? Any more nominations?
Stop the washing.
Any more nominations? All those in favor of Angie?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, clerk?
I'll nominate Harry Percy.
I'll second that.
Uh, have a nomination, Harry. Any more nominations? Any more nominations? Any more nominations? All those in favor of Jamie?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, we have to do our paper of record. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of choices. Um, so I will make a motion to use the banner.
Second it.
Bennington banner.
Reluctant.
Um, any other discussion on that? I don't know. All those in favor of the banner? Aye.
Aye.
Reluctantly, aye.
Same, aye.
I've just got a couple of them.
Um. What else is there?
I don't think we have to say Jimmy's in Senator market and whatnot.
No, I think you, I think we do. I think we do have to say our posting here.
Yes, that's the thing. Yes.
Um, so are, um.
Three postings.
Three postings, places of posting. Uh, right now, we use the Village Market, uh, Winchester's and the town office. Um, is it the board's pleasure to stay with those three, um, places of posting legally?
Make a motion to keep the three that we presently use.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Um.
Also shared on the website and Facebook.
That's right. Everything is also shared on our, on our Facebook page. Um.
Board openings and commission openings?
Yes, board openings. Can I have them? Um, well, tell me what's, thank you. I do believe the D R B has, um, a couple of positions open this year. I think there's also a position that is, um, on the D R B that has not been filled, so they do have, definitely still have an opening.
I don't know if it's in the back, the opening.
Tara knows that book by heart. You can tell her what she wants.
Where is it, Tara?
I don't know that the openings are listed like that necessarily.
Do we have all the listing of the terms?
Yep, it's in the beginning.
Yeah, it's a prompt after the introduction.
That's right after, that's right.
Stand in commission right here. Development Review Board.
Yeah, what page? I mean, it's kind of.
The tab, yep.
Please, I'll have to go buy that. I blew it out and buy that, baby. Here it is. So, sorry, um. The planning commission.
Has the alternate positions open.
Is, um, looks like we have one this year that's up in two thousand and twenty-three. Everyone else on the planning commission is good. Um, right, the development review board, we have one, two, uh, positions open or, or that need to be appointed, uh, an alternate that is empty, and another alternate that is filled currently. Um, and I don't know what the policy, I don't remember what the policy is on that alternate.
So they don't count against the quorum. They can fill in though if, say, someone who normally does count in the quorum, um, isn't able to make it, they can fill in.
But there's not a term expiration on that alternate.
I didn't think there was.
So if their term is up this year, then their alternate is up this year as well.
Correct, okay.
So that's where we're at with the development review board and the planning commission. Um, the health officer is good. Our animal control officer does not have an expiration date. Uh, the E nine-one coordinator is up this year, two thousand and twenty-three. Our fence viewer, uh, we have two positions that are vacant. Um, one position that's up in two thousand and twenty-three. Pound keepers, two vacant positions. Surveyor of wood is a three-year position, three-year term. It is up this year. Um, inspector of lumber and singles is a three-year term. It's up this year. Tree warden is a three-year position, up this year. Home health representative is a one-year that is vacant. Our E nine-one management coordinator is a three-year that's up this year. Our zoning administrator is a three-year that's up this year in August. Um, for B C R C delegates, uh, looks like we need, we have one vacant position, they're three-year terms, and one that's up right now. And that looks like it's it for positions and vacancies on our, in our offices. If I'm missing something.
I don't remember if we have to make a motion to post those or not, or if we can just list those.
I don't think so. I think we just list them.
Okay.
But we have time to.
And they usually, they submit their letter of interest to you guys anyway, so you would.
Yeah, I couldn't remember if for like P C and D R B, if we had to like do the whole thirty-day warning thing.
I don't believe so, no.
And don't we have to, um, didn't last year?
And then we just post the term.
Cause they actively posted this whole time.
The meetings.
Right, so. Um, anyone that's interested in any open or vacant positions, please send a letter of interest to the town office, either to Tara or Hannah, um, and they will get it directed to the select board in a timely fashion.
So I have a question. Maybe one of you can answer it. Like, as far as like positions like fence viewer, now that, what exactly are the legal standings of that position? Like, what is the purpose?
So I reached out to the L C T. There's very long drawn-out explanation of each one. Um, and what their duties are. I don't have that in front of me, so I don't wanna.
Are there any pertinent duties, or is it duties that relate to like the seventeen hundreds?
They are, they are duties that were more pertinent a long time ago.
Okay.
You know, some of them we can, um, or you, the select work can get rid of, and some are more necessary, but I can bring that list to the next meeting and, um, explain better which each one is.
The main.
I know we had questions about trustees of public monies too.
Yeah, no, I know there's some of that stuff in, in that's for Julie to bring to us, or what, you know, that's not for us to, to.
Right.
Oh, God, you know.
The fence viewers, basically, if you and I were having an issue as neighbors, a property line dispute, you call the fence viewer, they can come and look and.
They kind of.
They can see where the pins are. If you disagree, or I disagree, then you can go to court. They call him and, or her, to testify, well, this is where the pins were, you know.
Okay.
And unless there's a stone wall, then the judge can say, it was built by a stone wall. So, basically.
Okay, thank you for that.
I called it a week ago. So if you could do that, um, maybe if, I don't know if we want to do it for the next meeting, because we may have a pretty.
Busy.
Yeah, the next meeting's pretty busy, but.
Maybe the first, in April?
Yep. If you could just bring in a synopsis of what each one is, I don't think we want that long drawn-out.
No, that's fine.
Definition of each.
Maybe we could put that out as a email to everybody, so we could all read it ahead of time?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Um, so I think we're good on everything else. Uh, approval of the agenda at one addition. Sorry.
Two.
Two additions.
Yep.
I have one, Tara, I've been on the house.
I have an executive for personnel, please. It can go away at the end, like after fourteen.
Okay.
After contractual.
Yeah.
So we'll add another for fourteen.
For personnel?
For personnel, yeah. And it shouldn't take too long, but just.
Okay, um.
What's your ad?
Uh, town meeting.
Town meeting.
Yep.
Coverage.
Town meeting coverage.
Do you want that, here?
Um, it doesn't matter to me. We can put it, so. Um, let's.
Put it to my correspondent.
I was about to say, Bob Correspondent.
Yeah, we're, we're after warrants, it's totally fine. I just wanna touch on that briefly. Go from there.
So, is that it?
Approval agenda, uh, public comment, approval of the minutes of February twenty-third, warrants. Town meeting is seven A. Correspondence excess week permits, old business laptop replacement and possible select board tablet purchase. Salad waste, ordinance cleanup procedures and funding discussion continued. I have, I'm just making a note on here. Um, executive for legal, executive for contractual, executive for personnel, public comment and adjourn.
So moved with the changes.
Second it.
More discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I'd like to open up for public comment at this time, if there is any.
Let's see if any hands.
Okay, no hands. Uh, approval of minutes of February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved, second.
Uh, any discussion, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, warrants. Counts payable March third, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and fifty cents.
So moved.
Second it.
Uh, any discussion, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Counts payable P V one upgrade, March second, two thousand and twenty-three, sixteen thousand, ninety-four dollars and eighty-five cents.
So moved, second.
We'll figure it out. Um, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Counts payable for new town hall, March fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-seven cents.
So moved.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, payroll, March third, two thousand and twenty-three, twelve thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Payroll, March tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, twelve thousand, two hundred and six dollars and twenty-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Accounts payable, March tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, thirty-one thousand, five hundred and two dollars and thirty-five cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Uh, town meeting. Uh, first, I'd like to apologize, excuse me. I apologize for my voice. I've been losing it periodically for about a month now, during the day, so whatever. Um, I'd like to apologize to all of the residents of Pownell, um, for the lack of live coverage, um, from Cat TV on the town meeting. Um, we were under the assumption that it was going to be carried live. Uh, we were never informed that it was not going to be carried live, although we never confirmed that it was going to be carried live. So part of the responsibility is on us, but in the past, it has been carried live. Last year, it was carried live. So we just assumed that it was going to be. I would also like to apologize, um, because to the best of my knowledge, it was not, the recorded version of the town meeting was not even downloaded onto their channel until approximately five to five-thirty on Tuesday evening.
Seriously.
Seriously. So I, I would again like to apologize to everyone in town. If you were waiting for the town meeting to, to make a, a decision on your voting, um, I apologize. We will work diligently. You can be guaranteed that we will rectify this for next year's town meeting, one hundred and ten percent. This will not happen again, um, as, as long as I'm board chair and this board sits here. I know, I know we all feel the same way. I, I'm sure. I'm speaking for you guys right now, but I, I can see heads and eyes and.
Yeah.
I can speak for you guys in this, in this manner, so.
We did attempt for their two previous meetings, uh, prior to the town meeting, with their informational sessions.
Mm-hmm.
But there's a lot of people that expect to watch that, so.
Hmm. And, and, you know, like I said, uh, you know, absolutely, we're gonna take responsibility. We should have made sure because we, we would have moved our own equipment over to have the capability to broadcast it, at least on our Facebook and YouTube channel live, because we, we would have just had the equipment moved to the, to the school. Um, Rebecca, did you have anything you wanted to add on that? I know that you're in the meeting, so.
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm the, you know, I had a communication with them and, um, I did send you guys a timeline just for you to review over everything. Um, I do think we need a, have a more in-depth conversation about this. I know that you met with the director of Cat TV in July, um, and, uh, she made a series of points. Um, I gave you some commentary on each of those points, but ultimately, when I reached out and asked them why it wasn't live, they told me it was because they don't have enough equipment, um, to go live in three towns, to more than two towns. And I said, well, did you, you know, I asked, did you tell our town specifically that we would not be live? And they kept trying to say that Tara knew. So there was, and I know that Tara didn't know that. All of us, you know, they tried to say we weren't live last year. I said, yes, I made sure that happened, and I was part of that decision. And, um, so, you know, I wish that we had known because we absolutely would have made sure this happens. I do have some suggestions going forward. We have the capability to live broadcast all of our meetings. It's pressing a couple buttons on the machinery we already have, and we can do, we can go live on both YouTube and on our Facebook page. Um, I have a couple suggestions for you. One is that we start doing that, um, and we start educating the public as to where they can watch our live broadcast meetings. Um, I suggest that we create a video, uh, live broadcast, recording and archiving policy. It would be very short. The, that way, uh, and maybe a little procedural manual, so that if, God forbid, like Hannah or Tara aren't there to do the meeting, that someone can easily follow the directions to make sure that it happens. Um, and I know that there were some points made when Cat TV came in July, things, saying things like, well, but they archive, they archive these videos. Well, we archive them too, and we archive them in the exact same way. Um, she said something about there's a potential for conflict of interest if we record our own meetings and archive our own meetings. I'm gonna push back on that a bit, because if there was any truth to that assertion, then there would also be a conflict of interest in us taking our own minutes and storing our own, um, public records, our own minutes, our own, uh, all of our vital records, right? So it is actually the town's responsibility to maintain their own records in a public and transparent way. And, you know, it's not, it's great to have a, a third-party resource to help us with things that we need help with, but when we have the capacity in-house, we should do it, and we have that capacity. We can archive these videos indefinitely, as long as YouTube exists, as long as Facebook exists, those can exist. Um, we can even save them on a hard drive if we want, you know, the reporting's directly off of Zoom. So those are just some suggestions I have for you going forward, and then start educating the public that we're doing that, if you decide to do it. Um, but it just, you know, the more places where it's broadcast, the better. And next year at town meeting, we prepare and we move that. If it's at the school, we move, we move that Zoom conferencing system over there, and we make sure it's working, and we make sure that that is live broadcast to the town. And I, you know, there was also kind of some conjecture that, oh, but Pownell's never been live in the past, and I, you know, what my, what I responded with was, everything has changed since the pandemic. You know, the last few years have really changed the way that we do business, and Pownell in particular, we are one of the, we're one of the, the, you know, I, I believe other towns don't allow people into their Zoom room anymore. We're one of the last towns that actually invite the public into our Zoom room, as opposed to saying you have to come in person if you want to make public comment. Um, so, you know, we've really changed the way we do business. I love that we always have a remote option. I think people have come to depend on that. So whatever we did pre-pandemic, if we didn't have it live, to me is not relevant. We've had it live in the last couple of years, and that should continue.
I agree.
Definitely. I, I think we need to, to follow through on this. Um, and, and as far as making decisions on, on where we're gonna go, I think we need to take a little bit of time, and, and, and I'd like to do it with a full board, you know, and, and obviously, we're missing Bob, so he couldn't be here, so. Um, so I'd like to put it on for maybe the, that first meeting we have in April, um, cause our, our March twenty-third meeting's already getting jammed up, and this isn't a vital thing to discuss, but it is very important to discuss.
Definitely.
And to, and to follow through with it, because, uh, I feel that we have, um, let our residents down to a certain degree on this situation, um, sort of out of our control, but not totally out of our control. So, once again, I apologize, and we're gonna, we're gonna rectify it.
I also apologize. I, uh, I should have confirmed.
It's.
And I'm, I'm disappointed that it wasn't.
I'm very disa- I'm very disappointed that it wasn't broadcast. I'm also very disappointed that it wasn't put on, on, uh, later Monday night. It wasn't like we were done at midnight.
Right.
I, I'm, and, and Tuesday morning, early. Why it was Tuesday at, at five to five-thirty, and, you know, when we had two, two hours, an hour and a half to two or two and a half hours of voting time left, um, really disappoints me. That. I, I have, I have some feelings that, you know what, I wasn't gonna share them, but I am gonna share them. And it's just something I thought about today, when I was, when I was working, driving a bus. I, I feel that, I feel that people in the past, for whatever reason, have stepped on Pownell, and I, I'm not saying that they did this, I'm just saying this is how I feel, because Pownell just kind of let things like this go in the past, and didn't, and didn't fight for it. I think it's a different world. I think it's a different group of people running the town right now. I think it's a different group of people that live here and want things, and I think every single one of us, residents included, are gonna fight for our town and fight for what's right. And that's, and that's how I feel, and I'm gonna leave it at that. Correspondence.
I have quite a few. So, um, Julie sent in, remember the licensing for liquor and tobacco licenses are done a little bit differently now. It's on the computer. She just needs a motion for you to approve them, basically. Um, so the first one is Dwyer State Line. They have second-class licenses for alcohol, but they also have two different tobacco licenses, one for tobacco, one for tobacco substitute.
Okay. Do we have to do them individually?
Well, there, we have Dwyers and then the American Legion.
The reason why that is like that, just so people understand, is because you can lose, you can be selling cigarettes, and say somebody makes a mistake and doesn't card somebody, you can lose that privilege, but still be able to sell alcohol. Same with alcohol.
Okay.
You could lose the privilege of alcohol, but still be able to sell tobacco products. That's why they're split like that now.
Okay. So I would do Dwyer's first, and then I'll read the other one.
Make a motion to accept, uh, Dwyer's application for littering tobacco.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The next one is the American Legion. They have the outside consumption permit, and they have a first-class and a third-class club license.
And this is for outside?
Um, one, outside and, and inside.
Oh, okay. All right, just wanted to make sure it's clear. Perfect.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the second one is, um, from Darcy at the wastewater treatment facility. She was able to save a lot of money in her project. She got the P V one upgrade done and had some money remaining. So she, after the reigning anticipated expenditures, um, we will still have a significant amount of money remaining. Specifically, the amount remaining will completely cover the cost of the wastewater treatment facility heating system upgrade in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. I am requesting that the board reallocate the remaining funds from the P V one project upgrade to the wastewater treatment facility system, heating system upgrade. And that would only leave the SCADA computer system and the small-scale excavator as their ARPA requests. Yep.
I think that's a great idea, cause it's aged out to the point where it needs to be.
Kudos to her for being able to save that much money. That's awesome.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Did a great job.
Right. What's the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion. We approve the transfer of the leftover funds from the upgrade over to the heating system upgrade.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Uh, absolutely. I'd like to say, Darcy, congratulations on saving that money and, and working really hard and doing an incredible job on this, on this entire project to, uh, bring it in. In today's world, bringing something in under budget, but especially, uh, a significant amount under budget. Um, great job.
Especially being that there's only three of them down there.
Uh, it's, it's just, when you can bring a project in under budget, there's, it's a three hundred and, three hundred thousand dollar plus budget or project, and, and you commit, you know, forty grand under, you've done, you've done a really, you know, you've done an incredible job, okay? So, um, great job. Um, I have a motion on the floor. I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the third one, and I apologize because I don't have exact numbers in front of me, but Leonard has some money left in the budget from the purchase of the cattle. He has numerous amounts of crates piled up at his house and in his shed. He would like to know if he can get a shed. With that said, I want, I feel like I should share my opinion. My opinion was, we put the cattle up so that we don't necessarily need all those cages. He said there are circumstances sometimes where we go into like a hoarding situation, where there's a lot of pets that we might use them, but I mean, I guess it's up to you guys whether you would want him to try to put a shed up down there at the transfer station near the kennel, or if you think it's kind of.
Or the other thing, if I remember right, talking to Leonard, is that, say, there's an issue where, say, a private citizen requested something. He could drop it off until they capture the said animal, and then he goes and picks it up also. Um, so, I mean, if the town's already purchased these items, and that's what's gonna be stored in there, I think that's a feasible request.
I'd like a little bit more information, like what size shed is he requesting? Where are we gonna put it?
Okay.
I would like a little bit more.
And a cost.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd also like to look into. I'd like to look into the.
Anywhere in town that could be stored?
Well, I'd like to look, a couple of things. I'd like to look into another location, whether we can put it into the building.
Downstairs.
Downstairs here, the building, the tannery, um.
The warehouse down.
Warehouse down there. I'd also, um, like to look into the, um, one of the sheds at the C D C. If we're gonna purchase a shed, I, I'd like to try to keep it with the kids at the school.
Yep, absolutely.
If that's, if that's an option, rather than from some shed company someplace.
Yep.
Agreed.
Um, you know, and a cost, size, cost.
Get approximate.
A couple of more of those options, and I think Leonard will definitely understand what we're asking.
Definitely.
Okay. I'm not opposed to it. I just wanna research it out a little more.
Don't wanna buy a twenty by thirty if he just needs a ten by ten.
Or, and I, and I really and truly, I think the sheds that the C D C kids build are all the same exact size. If one of them's not big enough, that's fine. I, I just would.
Well, we looked into it for youth baseball last year. They have two sizes.
Okay, right, perfect.
Okay.
Just research that out, let.
Yeah, I'll get some more information.
Nice, thank you.
Okay, so now we just have three letters from people interested in the board. So this one is from Carl Strohmeyer. Uh, dear select board members, I would like to thank you for allowing me to serve on the development review board, and I would like to request to be reappointed to the development review board. Carl Strohmeyer.
And I believe Carl's turn is up.
I think so, yes. Yeah, that's why, um, him and John, I'm guessing. Cause I have one.
John Bush. Is he, is Carl the only letter of interest right now?
Um, John also.
John also?
Next page, page ten.
Yeah, I'm headed there, girl.
Carl's been on the board for a while. And John's been on.
And he's great. I mean, if I ask him for something, he sends me tons of information.
Oh, yeah, he's very.
Yeah.
Yeah, when we talked about something, he had to give me all the information from me before I even.
Like the next day, yeah.
I am because there are two alternate positions on the DRB as well. I'm totally fine with um, moving forward on that tonight if everyone else is on the board.
I'm okay with it.
I am too.
Because, because there are, if, if there are other interested people, um, there's still some opportunity for, for other people to be on that board. Okay?
Make a motion to accept Carl and John's.
What's the one at a time?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we didn't hear John's.
That's right. No, I only know, trying to move fast, but what's the one at a time?
Carl Strohmeyer's application for the DRB.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, we have uh, dear select board, it is that time again for reappointments and I, John Bushe are asking for your vote once again to the development review board. I have learned much as well as brought much to the table over the years and believe I can and will continue to help going forward. So I respectfully ask for you to reappoint me once again to the development review board. Thank you for your time and consideration. Respectfully, John Bushe.
I'll make a motion. We approve.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Hang on, so this is a new person. I do not know this gentleman, Roy Lauridson. Um, he sent the uh, letter of interest through the website. He said, um, I've experienced, I had some experience with planning serving as a Harvard Divinity Schools Director of Operations prior to retirement. Town planning is different, of course, and not an area of my experience. Just the same, I'd like to see panel thrive as a community and expect that the layout of the town makes us quite challenging. The town planning report was quite thorough and some of the ideas worth exploring. Roy.
He's applying for the planning commission?
What do we have for opening?
We have one opening with um.
You say Lloyd or Roy?
Roy.
Winchester is his turn. So.
And an alternate, right?
On the planning commission?
They might not be listed.
What I'd like to do with this one is I'd like to bring um, Mr. Lauridson.
Lor- Lauridson.
Lauridson, I'd like to bring him in for an interview to the board. Because um, Carl, we've all worked with Carl, we've all worked with John.
Yep.
Um, I'd like to just bring this gentleman in um, for an interview. Uh, whether we do it on a separate night or, or a regular board meeting, doesn't matter to me. Um, cause we could do it in executive, but I, I would love to hear his ideas and, and see, you know, just my opinion.
That makes sense, cause I don't know who he is.
In the past, if we also reached out, if we had an alternate to see if they wanted to fill a full-time position. Cause I know we've done that before too.
The only alternate that we have for, was for DRB right now. We don't have any alternates on planning.
No, it's for planning.
Yeah, but we don't have any planning. We're saying for DRB, Jim's an alternate.
Yep.
And we asked him, he doesn't have any interest in.
But we, yeah, but this is for the planning.
Yeah, I was saying that there's no.
But there's no money, okay. Thank you.
So I'd love to set up an appointment and bring him in for.
An executive, you said?
I, I think so.
Has it, but if we put it at the April, the April meeting.
I think so. Because, because the planning commission right now, if they if they have their meetings, they can conduct a meeting. They're fine with their numbers.
Yep.
They could, they could have a meeting and conduct business.
Yeah.
Okay, I just don't wanna put them into a situation where they can't conduct business.
That is, that's it.
It's all for correspondent? Access weight permits?
Okay, so we have Phoenix Feeds and Nutrition Fleet and these have all been signed off on by Joel. We have, oh. What is this?
Velco is a.
Velco is also a fleet.
They're all, they were, they're all power lines.
Vermont Agency of Transportation, oh, that's Valley Cream Services. Also a fleet. And Days and Brothers Trucking Fleet. All signed off on by Joel already.
I'll make a motion. We approve all the excess weight permits.
Second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Uh, moving into old business. Do we have any old business?
Did you want to give your paper to do your statement about the racetrack census? Was it why? Maybe people didn't see it.
I, I don't, but I can find it on my phone.
Maybe you should.
Good idea.
Yeah, good idea. Bear with me for a couple minutes. I'll find this on my.
I have it if you guys want it.
Do, do you have it right, available?
Yeah, I can just go grab it off, out of.
No, I can, I can find it. Bear with me for a minute.
Thanks for it. Winner gets to read it.
And we have had a couple of community members reaching out to the commissioner. I've seen, I've been CC'd on a couple of them.
Oh, good.
A little added pressure to him wouldn't hurt.
When did you send that? Monday?
I've got it.
Winner, winner.
Yeah, there you go.
Chicken dinner, are you ready?
Go ahead, please.
Okay, update on the racetrack. Um, I spoke with GJ Grow, head of Rutland Fire and Safety. He wrote up findings and orders and sent them to headquarters. And they will need to be reviewed and approved and possibly amended by the commissioner. Um, in these orders, he is demanding that the building be torn down and his quote is, this has gone beyond fencing. It is his conclusion that action, that this action would be the only way the property could be made a safer environment. The building needs to be demolished with asbestos regulations, which is usually done by wetting and dismantling as opposed to implosion. This is sitting on the desk of the commissioner, commissioner currently and as soon as he approves or amends the findings and orders, that will be served to the property owner. And this situation is fully in the hands of the state now. And the town of panel, no more has, we don't have any more direct involvement with any legal or civil action regarding this situation. So when people come and ask us, as they always do, what are you doing about the racetrack? We've already done a whole bunch of things about the racetrack and we've pushed it along. And the orders, findings and orders are sitting at the desk of the commissioner as we speak.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
And you obviously found it way quicker than I could. I knew it was in there someplace. Any more old business? Okay, laptop replacement, uh, possible select board tablet purchase discussion.
Did you send those back over this way?
I did not.
Okay.
I put them on here though, so they weren't in my way.
Basically, Joel has needed a laptop since I started four years ago. Um, so I worked with IT, they found this um, rugged laptop. It is nineteen hundred and seventy-nine dollars, but it's a Dell and it, they last um, five to six years. Um, and they, they are good laptops. I mean, I love mine. Um, I don't have any problems with them. And like I said, this is the one that IT suggested. And then as far as the tablets, I know you guys had talked about possibly purchasing tablets to have instead of having your agenda on paper and, and your packets in front of you, you would have a tablet and they would stay here. Um, so they wouldn't be used as super tons. So hopefully they would last longer than the five years.
It'd be much easier to find that email if I could actually read it inside of it.
Cut down the amount of paper waste we generate too.
My question is, would other on boards be able to use it?
Yep.
Would be allowed to use?
Yep.
Then.
Just create user accounts.
Exactly. Yeah, just like we have on our computers.
Excellent.
So we do my work with community stations that
Everybody has.
Into your account. I have a question regarding the laptop for Joel.
Okay.
Uh, does Joel's budget have an uh, electronic equipment replacement fund like the town hall does?
He does not, but I looked at our IT budget and we have plenty of room to purchase his computer. I think they were all, I think all computers are all IT things come out of that one budget.
Okay.
I, I think that's correct.
Yeah, alright, that's.
That's fair.
Almost a hundred percent.
That's what I was wondering.
It's a pretty big.
I was gonna say, cause if it's not, we should include it.
Right. No, it definitely is. And your budget, the selectmen budget actually will cover all but one of the tablets and that's only because we did the solid waste ordinance flyers and that stuff out of that budget.
And IT has no issue taking on the added?
So the tablets, you're, that's five tablets you're talking about purchasing, correct?
Yep.
So.
What about like the boards that have seven members?
Well, that's where, that's where I was going. So in our IT budget, do we have enough money? Without having it in front of me, I don't know the answer.
Seven, yes.
For seven.
Yeah.
So four would come out of the select board budget.
Yep.
Three would come out of the IT.
Yeah.
Um, out of our IT budget, plus our computer purchase for Joel would come out of the IT budget. And we're very comfortable with that.
Yep.
Okay.
So I basically just wanted to present it and see if you were still.
I just, I just think that because, because our DRB has been having um, a hundred percent attendance. I think our planning commission has been running um, a hundred percent or close to a hundred percent attendance on, on their, uh, in their meetings, which is incredible. I don't want two people sitting there, you know, to your point, I don't wanna have two people trying to look off one tablet.
Definitely say a lot of paper, especially in DRB, cause they usually like to pack.
Yeah, or like even referencing the bylaws.
Yeah.
Like the bylaws, you know, but a lot of pages to have to keep printing.
Oh yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna save us.
It will save a lot of. It's gonna save us money.
Well, it's just gonna, it's gonna be more efficient to you.
Right.
Yep.
And everyone would have their own user account, so and the tablets would stay here. That's, that's perfect. And then you're the um, Hannah, you, you're at the DRB and the planning commission meetings anyway, so you could have that all set up for them on their meeting nights. Okay, just some questions.
I have a question regarding, does IT feel we need to do any upgrades to our internal wifi network to handle all the added devices?
Um, not currently, but I'll double check with them. Uh, they're gonna have to come down to help us get them set up for multi-users anyway. And they were actually down today just to look at the schoolhouse to see, um, because our previous IT person did all the hookups. And they're like, ooh, we don't really do hookups, so it was an interesting thing. Um, but we got it taken care of. Stan's gonna help us out with the finishing pieces, so.
What's the board's pleasure?
I make a motion that we go ahead with the seven tablets and the one for Joel.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Bye.
Okay. Solid waste ordinance cleanup procedures and funding discussion continue.
I'm almost done. I have a lot to say. Okay, so I just have one, we keep bringing this back so we can keep talking about it. I did hear from the lawyer that we should be able to take the rehab loan money and put that wherever we want. Um, I just need to work with Alan on how we do that and what that might look like. So if you guys determined you wanted it in an expense line to cover some of the cleanup costs, we can do that. We just need to be really clear with our motions, where it's coming from.
Right.
Where it's going to and what it's for.
So first, we wanna make sure we're clear on the line item that we're creating.
Exactly.
Saying and then.
Exactly.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
And then I have, um, at the previous meeting, we talked about, there's one location that has a tenant running, they're probably going to be evicted, the owners, you know, it's kind of not their fault, they kind of just took over this problem. So I drafted a letter that I kind of wanted to just ask if you thought this was a good idea or not. Um, if we offer to clean it up one time and then we require them to get garbage removal for their tenants. So however we need to do it, whether we get volunteers or we pay for the dumpster, we get it cleaned up that one time. They then put trash receptacles there for their tenants. If they don't and the garbage keeps piling, they will then be fined and have a lien put on their house as sort of the consequence to not following through. Cause we're doing like this huge favor, however you wanna put it, to clean it up. So how do we make sure it's not gonna get that bad again? That's what I'm trying to, to gauge is like, what's the best way to do that? So that we know for sure it's not going to be an issue.
I'm not opposed to doing the cleanup. I am opposed to making it a gift. Because then when we set the precedent, if we do it for one resident, we'd have to do it for everybody.
Yes.
That's my only concern.
Okay.
That's, that, that's my issue too.
If it came with the stipulation that they have to pay us back and if they don't, then we attach a lien to their property.
Okay.
But even if they, we set it up for an easy payment like we discussed before and now, you know, whatever, break it down to a minimum payment.
One, one question that I have on this, which I've been thinking about on the continued discussion. We've never set a fine amount per day. We've always said we're gonna, we authorize me to write the tickets at the last board meeting.
That's not already in the thing?
I thought we had discussed.
Have we, have we set per, how much per day?
I did. Maybe not.
I just wanna make sure.
I thought we.
You're talking for the solid waste ordinance, right?
We have the different offenses listed there at the bottom of the ordinance, but it, it, I don't think it says a per day. I'm not sure. I think it just goes by.
Maybe per offense.
That's right. So.
And didn't we put a timeframe on that or not? If they didn't, if a certain amount of time before, if they didn't react and clean up.
Fine, I thought we gave like two weeks from each ticket to rectify. I, that I'm completely.
That's what I'm trying to remember. I know we put a, I, I know we discussed putting a timeframe. And if you went back, say in two weeks and they were working on cleaning it up, showing progress, then you didn't take and you just said, thank you, and then you.
Keep going.
And if there was no progress and more stuff, then you implemented another fine. I know we discussed that and I thought we had timeframes in there, but.
I, I'm not, I'm not seeing a timeframe. I'm, I'm seeing, I'm seeing first offense, fifty dollar full penalty, full penalty, twenty-five dollar waiver penalty. I'm seeing second offense, hundred dollars fifty, third offense, two hundred, one hundred, page eighteen.
Thank you.
Fourth offense is four hundred, two hundred and subsequent offense is eight hundred or four hundred waiver. So one of the reasons that I haven't written any, or there's a couple of reasons I haven't written any tickets. One of them, we were waiting for the body camera to come in, it's here.
Yep.
And I, I I wanna make sure, I wanna make sure when we, when we write a fine, if I walk in and say to somebody, I'm fining you fifty dollars for this first offense. Is it fifty dollars per month? Is it, so I, we need to.
On your ticket book, does it give like how many days ask you paid or anything for a penalty or anything?
I don't think it really matters. It's all, it's all what we have in our ordinance.
So if we put a change into this, do we have to go to the approval process all over again? What's a legal, legal aspect of that?
I think so, yes.
So we gotta do the whole sixty days?
I never swore we discussed that.
Yeah, it's not in here.
We just thought.
I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come right out and I'm gonna be point blank with this. I wanna start writing tickets.
Until you have a day in your timeframe.
I, I wanna start writing tickets to people.
Yeah, I would like to see this.
I want our habitual offenders, our, our people who have been, are, we've already sent letters to.
Right.
But I want this ticket to mean something.
Yes.
Okay, I want it to mean something. When you go to sell your property, if you don't pay this ticket, there's five thousand dollars that, that in fines. You're gonna come back to the town of panel and I'm just being hypothetical, okay? I, I, if I go in and write a fifty dollar ticket to some of these people, first off, and some of them aren't gonna pay anyways and we know that. Let's be honest.
Yeah.
Right.
Right? They're not gonna pay because they haven't paid the violations that we've already given.
Right.
So they're not gonna pay this ticket. But when they go to sell that property, we're gonna get our money back.
Right.
Okay, we're gonna get it. And then that can go into what you're working on, on that. Eighteen thousand dollars.
To create a fund, we may need to take that to vote if we're gonna create a fund. Um, but that's a year away, so I'm trying to find a way we can use the money without making it a fund just yet and then, yeah. So I'm still working on it.
Take my steps.
Yeah.
But, right, so this is all new and we probably have, you know, not.
But I agree with your, the intention and what you're attempting to do. I just, I honestly thought we had discussed timeframe.
The letter gave thirty days.
Gave what?
Then again, thirty, thirty days to, I think, it was like thirty days.
Yeah, our letters.
I think that's what we did, as we, the committee stated.
Yeah, so like if it goes thirty days, then you, then it's considered a second offense? Is that how you would think? I don't know.
That's how I would personally interpret it.
And that's fine, and that's fine. I, I just wanna make sure that we're clear and I, and I also think that I think we need to revisit this a little bit.
We didn't put timeframes on it.
We definitely have timeframes. Timeframes, you know.
That way it covers our keysters.
Yeah, cause I think right there's a reason why a judge could strike it down.
What was that, Hannah?
Does that go back and listen to the planning commission meeting to see how they discuss that?
Okay.
Um, that matters or not?
Well, sure does. You've been working hard on this. I'd love to hear what, what was.
I think we kind of left the timeframe open to, like, we all had ideas, but I think we left it for the select board. And then we had discussions about it.
Right.
I can go back to those for separate meetings.
That's what I'm talking about.
Because I, I'd like to see this, personally, I'd like to see this as a, um, per day type of thing.
After, like right off the bat from the first ticket, or are you gonna give them a window to? Show some effort.
Two weeks to start cleaning up and then.
So we've given them a thirty day notice.
From the letter.
From our letter. Okay. And, and these would be our, these would be the ticketed offenders.
Okay.
The, the people who have received letters or, or landowners who have received the letter.
Letter of intent to clean it up.
So they've, they've been given thirty days.
Right.
Notice to clean up. Right?
Yep.
And then they haven't made an attempt to clean up.
Okay.
Okay? These are the ones that we're gonna ticket.
Right.
So I don't think giving them another thirty days.
No, I don't, I don't want to see thirty days either.
I, I think we go in and we say, um, I think we say it's X number of dollars. We, we give them the, the first offense is a fifty dollar penalty to start with and so much a day for fifteen days.
And then it would go to the second?
And then it would go to the second offense.
And then fifteen days and then the third?
Yep. Rather than drag this out forever and ever and ever.
I certainly would send a message.
Because they're getting a letter, good faith from the town first.
First for thirty days.
Giving them a month.
Right. So, yes. And that.
So in a sense.
Send that to our attorney to see if, in that language right there, to see if, um, we have to reconvene.
We have to redraft that or if we can just.
Just leave it out of the paper folder.
Or if this, no, or if the select board can take and just impose added amendments.
Yeah, we talk to our lawyer and VLCT just to make sure.
Yes.
Yeah.
Cause if we can, if we can add it in as the penalty part of it without having to redraft it.
With the amendment as far as that goes.
Yeah, if the select board can do. I, I just, I think so, so my, in my personal opinion is we've given them thirty days.
I agree with that.
We give them fifteen days. So in a sense you give them forty-five days.
Yeah. To show some effort.
To show some effort.
Right.
Right? We, we've given them.
Or reach out to the town and say, I can't afford this. I need help.
Something, something.
Reach out something. Don't just leave it there.
Exactly.
Piling.
Okay. Don't keep piling it up. Don't keep leaving it there thinking nothing's gonna happen.
Yep.
Okay? And then, and then we, we, because, because as the zoning administrator, I have the ability to, for a zoning violation, I can determine the fine per day. For a zoning violation, up to a certain, I think it's up to two hundred bucks a day. I don't, I don't remember. I've only done one. They paid. Um, so I, I just think that we need to, we need to research this out just a hair more. Before we do this, if we say, okay, um, here's your first offense, it's fifty dollars and twenty-five dollars a day for the next fifteen days, or whatever we decide, whatever we decide. Okay? And then we say after fifteen days, it is now a hundred dollar penalty because it's your second offense. And X number of dollars per day. Which the dot, the, the, the number per day can, in my opinion, could stay the same.
Right.
Fifteen days after that, it is now, uh, two hundred dollars.
Yep.
And, and then at, at some point, somebody's gonna say, I better clean up.
I would hope.
Or the town panel and somebody's piece of property sells.
Yeah.
And you get some fairly decent money. You're coming back into our fund to clean up.
Yep. You're gonna sell your property for nothing.
So that's, that's my hope. My hope is that, that people get wind of this and they clean up. I, I don't want to find somebody. I, I don't. I, but I'm going to.
But if you're gonna be a offender, not a good neighbor, then this is what's gonna happen.
That's right. That's right. So, you know, that, that's my goal is to make everybody good neighbors and keep their yards decent and fairly clean.
So the really, really bad one, can't do anything with it yet.
Well, let's, let's discuss that one a little more because you brought it up and it's in the solid waste thing.
Are you sure that the people have been evicted? Because I don't think so. No, I think they're still there. I think they're in the process.
I think they have to wait for the first day of spring.
I wouldn't want to help clean up the.
You gotta wait for the.
Property at all.
Well, I thought Vermont didn't allow evictions during winter.
Yeah, they do. If you have all your documentation and you can.
I know for a fact that the state truck was there two weeks ago and they filled the back of a small pickup truck on the side of the road from that spot.
Some, so, so one of the thoughts that I've had on this, and I've had it on this particular property. Okay? Cause I've tossed it around because we've talked about.
Yeah, and there's a lot of complaints about it.
And there is a lot of complaints about it. One of the thoughts that I've had, because I believe the new property owners are the, the ones that have taken it back into possession, have access to a truck. Okay? One of the thoughts that I've had was that we waive the, um, fees at the transfer station. They bring, they bring their, the trash from that. And, and we're placing a lot of faith on the owner to bring just the trash from there. But I believe that's probably an okay thing to be doing with the new owners or the, coming back that we could probably place the faith on them that they're only gonna bring the trash from there and what's there to, to the transfer station to be taken care of. So that we do try to help them clean it up. And, and I know exactly what you're saying about, but I also don't have a huge problem with that. By setting precedence with that, Brian, because, because if we're, if we're helping, if we're taking that property owner, we're trying to help him out until we get this fund in there, then that, that we know we have, we just gotta figure out how to do it.
I get what you're saying and I'm not heartless about it.
No, I know you're not. But you have a valid point. You're, you're, we're setting precedence.
Yeah.
I get that. I totally do.
Or we could even, I mean, I would go as far as to say, please buy your dump sticker. And then you have your free dump days to bring all of.
Yeah, that's a whole free chuckle right there.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, and then at least they're contributing some, just about.
That's a good idea.
I don't think they would have a problem with that either.
But I do, I do. I know where you're coming from, helping somebody try to, the, the inherited, excuse me, inherited a situation in it. And I don't think they inherited this willingly. Okay. I don't think they took ownership of this in a willingly situation. I think they were kind of forced back into it.
It's a tough one.
It's a tough.
And maybe I'll just reach out and see what I can figure out with them and bring it back.
And that's fine. I, I, I think we're all sympathetic, but I, I do, and I see Brian's point for sure. We have to be very careful with what we do set for our precedent.
Yeah. I just don't want to see suddenly like free dump days used to be where you have a line of like seventy-five cars down the road. Everybody dumping for free and the town's out two hundred thousand dollars in one weekend.
Hmm. No, I agree. I also think that, that when we have these, um, high, high complaint situations, if it's coming back to the, to the taxpayers and we're cleaning up, i- if we're cleaning up that high traffic, high complaint area, are, are the taxpayers and residents gonna really be uncomfortable with that? I'm trying to find the right words.
Trying to play devil's habit, Ken.
I was trying to find the right words, Jamie, to be honest with you, you know? Because, because there are a lot of complaints about, about the one particular place. There's a lot of complaints about, there's a lot of complaints about a couple of them, right? And we know that.
And if they come a health situation.
But, but in my estimation, these are two totally different circumstances because we have one that inherited a situation that, like I said, unwillingly, I'm pretty sure. Okay. They were kind of forced into becoming the owner. The other one is the owner, has been the owner, has been notified and continues to not do what we ask.
I mean, I, I'm leaning in the way you're, in the process because I know the one that inherited it has been slowly attempting to clean things up and has been showing very good faith in doing so. And.
I think you're trying a little bit.
That's what I'm saying. That, that, no, honestly, that's what, from what I've seen. And so I understand where you're going there. Um.
Let's let, Tara, will you reach out to them and see what kind of a, um.
I know them personally.
No, I know. If you can see what kind of.
What we can try to figure out.
Right. What kind of a, um, compromise we can come to on that, what, what they're thinking and then bring it to us on the twenty-third. I know, I know we're loaded on the twenty-third, but I'd like to, I'd like to bring it back there on the twenty-third.
Okay.
Um, because I, I want to get rid of that problem. I, I want to do what we can for, for that problem. Um, and then we, we may want to, you know, starting out as the board chair awesome here, we may want to.
Way to table more stuff.
No. Hey, 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 I know table stuff. I, I hate that word. And that's why, that's, that's why what's coming out of my mouth right, I know. That's why what's ready to come out of my mouth is, is probably not gonna make it. We may want to have, we may want to do a special meeting on the ordinance and the fines and the number of days and that stuff before the twenty-third so that we don't pound everybody that.
Fine with that.
Especially if you get information from the attorneys.
Yeah, I was gonna say, as soon as Tara finds the information, reach out to us and we can schedule. We only need to give what, twenty-four hours advance?
Right. And only for that subject.
Okay.
So I would, I would really entertain rather than put it off because the twenty-third is really busy. I'd rather do this before April so that once spring rolls around and, and it starts to, the snow starts to go.
Yep.
I want to be able to go.
So I'll talk to the property owner. I'll reach out to the lawyer and I'll reach out to VLCT and then we'll come back probably Thursday, probably a week from today.
Probably a week from today.
That sounds like.
So planning on a special meeting.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
Yeah, no wonder we have class again.
Fifteenth.
Not till the thirty-first.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect.
Perfect. Are we good with that?
Yep.
And I, you're right. I hate tabling, but we have to table.
No, well, we need the information.
We need the information. So.
We can't help that.
Right. Okay.
Oh, what's going on in the files today? I have too much stuff.
Uh, anything else? I think we're good with that, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Executive for legal.
Make a motion. We enter into executive session for legal.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm just waiting for everything to be closed out.
Recording in progress.
I'll entertain a motion to you, um, come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, there's no action to be taken at this time?
I'll make a motion. We enter into executive session for contractual.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
She's saying.
Recording in progress.
I'll entertain a motion to, um, come out of executive for contractual.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to you enter executive for personnel.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Recording in progress.
I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, there'll be no action taken at this time. Uh, I'd like to open up public comment.
Yeah, break that through here.
Not say many times.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn finally.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you everyone for attending.
Good night, guys.
And I.
Thank you.
Cat TV is celebrating thirty years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next thirty years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.